And then, okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the public session of the Committee of the Whole of the Halton District School Board. Today is November 22, 2023. Please be advised that the meeting is being recorded and is being livestreamed on the hdsb.ca and on the HDSB YouTube channel. We have trustees attending in person tonight. Joining us are Trustees Gray, Shuttleworth, Zhang, Danielli, Collard, Baxter, Rocha, and Bryden. Thank you. Director Ennis, can you please note which staff are in attendance tonight?
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Oliver. We have a few senior staff members here this evening, not all, but many who are here to support the meeting this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, Trustee Gray will be honoring the traditional land.
Halton, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the Anishinaabe to the Atawarun and the Haudenosaunee and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in Indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions: land, water, plants, animals, ancestors that walked before us, and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. Trustee Rocha, would you like to move a motion to approve the agenda?
Sure.
Trustee Danielli, would you like to second this motion? Oh, sorry, there's no seconding.
Keep me in mind for the next one.
Sorry, yep. Are you ready for the question? Are there any objections to approving the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. On to declaring possible conflicts of interest. In relation to our agenda this evening, are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest? Seeing none, we'll move on to the second item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. Trustee Danielli, would you like to move a motion to approve the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting from November 8?
Why, thank you, yes, I would.
Thank you very much. Are you ready for the question? Are there any objections to approving the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Sorry, the minutes. The minutes, thank you. Seeing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Okay. Onto item 3.0. We have some items for discussion tonight. Item 3.1, policy and procedure updates. We have respectful workplace policy, and Superintendent Taha will be presenting. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair Oliver. Good evening, trustees. I am pleased to bring to you the revisions to the respectful workplace policy. You will see in your agenda a markup version of the policy and a clean or edited version of the policy. As you know, we've had many discussions and many deliberations and considerations with respect to the best approach to revise this policy. And also, as you know, I had asked trustees at the last Committee of the Whole if they would join me to establish a working group to put the final touches to this respectful workplace policy. I would like to thank those who came forward to join me on that team, including Trustee Shuttleworth, Trustee Rocha, Trustee Bryden, Trustee Baxter, and yourself, Madam Vice Chair Oliver. The consensus and the discussions that we've had during those meetings, we all agreed that the respectful workplace policy is a good policy in the sense that it has clear and concise content that really underscores the expectations that we have of our staff in terms of civility, respect, and professionalism. Our goal was to maintain a concise and a brief policy without in any way compromising its content and its objectives. Also, the task that we were focused on is to embed, where appropriate and possible, some of the principles and values that were considered from the professionalism policy that we had considered to adopt. And you will see from the revisions that we bring before you that they are... There are few revisions, not many. Nonetheless, they were revisions where we intended to streamline the content of this policy, eliminate any redundancies and duplications in terms of wording and/or definitions. And the key addition to this policy would be a statement in the middle of the policy under the objective statement that we feel captures the essence of this policy, and that is that all of us in this school board, educators, education workers, teachers, corporate staff, are here to engage in the learning of our students, and we have to do it in a civil, professional, and respectful manner that really honors and has regard for the well-being and safety of students, of colleagues, and obviously for public education as a whole. So you will see from the middle statement that we've incorporated in this policy, the purpose of this policy is to affirm expectations regarding staff modeling respect, civility, and professionalism at board and school settings and at school-based activities, focusing on the importance of demonstrating through personal conduct and presentation regard, and that's the important word here, regard for public education and each student's right to learn in a safe, inclusive, and accepting environment. So those are, you know, the key additions and revisions to this policy that was adopted back in 2017. And I've spoken in the past about the history of this policy and the context. And I'm happy, again, thank you to all trustees who contributed to this work, and I'm happy to turn it over for any questions or comments. Thank you.
Okay, I see there's a speaker's list with Margot. Please proceed.
Thanks. Through you, Joanna, to Sari. So the one thing that I brought up when we met before is trying to ensure that we have links or discussions between all the other policies and administrative procedures that may in some way attach themselves or reference or be something that people will look at to see, you know, again, we were trying to ensure we were closing all the gaps and loosening all the holes. When I look at what is included, it just has violence prevention in the workplace, respectful workplace, free of discrimination, harassment for administrative procedures, employment equity, equity in inclusive education, and health and safety. And then the Code of Conduct. Are those the only references that we have to policies outside of this that may impact respectful workplace pieces?
Thank you, Trustee Shuttleworth. Through you, thank you, Margot. Through you, Madam Vice Chair. Yes, that is correct. We had spoken about the importance of ensuring that this policy references all other board policies and/or companion administrative procedures that engages the topics that within fall within this policy. And the policies that are applicable and of relevance to the theme of respect, civility, and professionalism are the policies that you see listed in this draft. You may notice that, for example, the Ontario College of Teachers' standards of practice, professional standards of practice, and ethical standards of practice are not referenced in this document. We had considered whether we should or shouldn't. First, I would like to say that the absence of the reference of those professional standards of practice and ethical standards of practice does not in any way preclude those who are relying on this policy to enforce a particular behavior or conduct to refer to those standards of practice. The thinking, however, was, as I pointed earlier, this policy applies to all of the school board community, and that would be teachers, education workers, corporate staff, community members, trustees, volunteers, and so on, so forth. It's a large ecosystem, I think we described our school board. So we try to stay away from any reference that would single out directly or indirectly a particular employee group or a particular job classification. As you know, in our board, there are a host of professions and regulatory bodies that engage our staff, accountants, human resources professionals, lawyers, social workers, speech pathologists, DECEs, and obviously teachers and others. So in an effort to focus the policy on the fact that this applies to all of us and not only teachers, because we're all role models, we stayed away from referencing a particular regulatory body. But again, to answer your question, yes, in our inventory of policies, we've listed all of them in this document.
I have a follow-up. In board policies, there's the Code of Ethics. Does it not fall into this at all?
Good question. Code of Ethics. It might be an omission on my part, our part, I can circle back. I think there's an explanation for that, but I don't want to be guessing as to why we've omitted it, but I'll take it back.
Thanks very much.
Next, Robbie.
Thank you. I will start with an apology. I missed the second round of feedback on this document on the committee. But I'll add a thought here that we've... When you look at our compendium of policies, it's not always clear the set format. There's some use objectives, some use policy statements, some use objective and policy statement. So it might be helpful for us as trustees to codify which way we want to do that. I like the approach of objective and policy statement. It lays out, you know, our policy and procedure framework says we shall state a what and a why in our policies. And I think Sari's getting at that here, but I think it's a little obscured in the way that it's presented here. So a couple of recommendations. One, that we take the first two paragraphs and leave them under the objective and make the third paragraph the policy statement. And then we just change that wording a little bit around the purpose of this policy is... dot, dot, dot. I concocted the following, and it's basically the same with some shift and nuance. "HDSB staff are expected to model respect, civility, and professionalism at board and school settings and at school-based activities. HDSB staff are expected to demonstrate through personal conduct and presentation regard for public education, for colleagues," that's the one addition that is not in this draft right now, "and for each student's right to learn in a safe, inclusive, and accepting environment." So just a little play in that wording. This is Committee of the Whole. We don't have to amend a motion here, but putting that on the table for consideration.
Thank you, Trustee Bryden. Duly noted. If you can share with me those revisions in writing, that would be helpful for me to incorporate them or consider them before bringing them back to board at the next board meeting. Which reminds me that one of the things that while may seem minor in terms of the revisions that we've enacted in this policy is we've opted to use active verbs. So instead of aspirational words, you know, we recognize the importance of so-and-so, we're actually using words such as, you know, "we promote," "we are committed," and those are some of the discussions that occurred. So to your point, in terms of eliminating, as it says, "the purpose of this policy," and substitute it for this policy, our expectation is, would be in line with that discussion. So I'll look for your email and take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Onto Shaney.
Thank you. Through Joanna, to Sari. This is a policy. So in the policy, we should set the goals, and we set the direction, and we set the standard. So for the, under the policy, we have a procedure. So procedure can follow these standards and make more detailed procedure to implement these policy. But in this policy, in early version, there's OCT guideline was referenced. I noticed it is removed. And because this is a standard we need to follow, we are in the school business and the teacher, of course, this is a very important role, and not only teachers, all the staff and everyone in the school board are very important. We must respect each other. And in the teacher, of course, this is a large group in the school board, in the center of the business. And that's why, because this is a teacher, it's the largest group in school board, all the employees. So OCT guidelines will be very important. So I hope to bring this back, so set a standard. Because all these policies, we have the rules and the standard, and the industry guidelines, we should not miss the teacher's guideline. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback, Trustee Zhang. You are correct, the previous version of this policy did reference the OCT standards of practice and ethical standards of practice and conduct. The companion administrative procedure for this policy, such as the respectful workplace policy, does, as you pointed out, go into more detail as to what those behaviors look like, civility, respect, and professionalism. Again, the thinking with respect to not including a specific regulatory body in the policy is to underscore that it is a policy that is applicable and that is, you know, enforced for all of our employees, not only teachers. And as I said earlier, it does not in any way precludes the OCT standards of practice from being a source of authority that we rely on to enforce conduct in the workplace.
Okay, thank you. And on to Tanya.
Yes. So I only have some very minor edits. So I'll say them, and then I'll give you my markups. And that is, for the revised, we're missing February 2019 as one of the revised dates. And then there's no revision history added to the end of the document. So those were the only two things I wanted to point out, but I'll give you my notes. Thanks.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments for Sari? Okay, seeing none. So what I'm hearing is there will be an addition of reference to Code of Ethics, and perhaps you're going to take a look at that. Robbie and Tanya will provide you with their wording edits. And will you be then circulating another revised draft for trustees' final look before the board meeting?
I can certainly do that. It'll be in the board package, but I can certainly do that if that's the will of trustees.
Is everybody happy with just having it go into the board package? I'm seeing nods. Okay, so we're good with that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sari. Okay, moving on to item 3.2, public gallery decorum. And that is Tanya. So Tanya, if you could give us a little bit of preamble of where this came about from.
Okay, so before I start, I did share the document with you. I want to make sure that everyone can access it. Okay, if not, I will resend it. And so this document came about because we were in the midst of many people in the public gallery, and sometimes the public gallery doesn't know what decorum to follow. Can they speak? Can they clap? Can they interrupt? Can they... Can they bring posters? Can they bring a megaphone? Can they... Lots of things. And really, we don't have anything in writing letting them know what is expected of the guests in the public gallery. So the thought behind that was to look to see what other boards do, what other governments do when they have a public gallery, and trying to create a document that would serve a few purposes. One, for us to be able to set expectations, like what kind of behavior will we accept from the public. And another is to perhaps post something along those walls, letting the public know what's expected of them. And also to have something on the public website, letting them know that you are more than welcome to attend our meetings, but there is an expectation of how the public is to behave. And so I've sent this document out a few times for a feedback, and many of you have made some comments. So this is a living document right now whereby it's open for feedback, open to capture anything you would like to have added, perhaps remove things in case you find that we're being too strict. So roughly, and also, one key thing is to let the public know why we're having these meetings. And the reason why we have these meetings is to conduct business. This is a work meeting. So letting the public know that. So off the top, some of the items that have been posted on here is that visitors to sign in with a valid photo ID, although there is some room for debate on whether this is mandatory or not. That's why it's highlighted in yellow. That visitors in the public gallery must remain quiet and please not applaud unless, of course, if someone is being recognized for either an Inspire Award or service. Or maybe we say you can't clap at all. So we can talk about that. We would also expect people to mute any of their devices. And do we want them to be able to record? So this is something up for debate. Do we want them to sit there and be able to record our meetings, knowing that our meetings are available on livestream? Because I know it can be very distracting, and if we are conducting business, we don't want to be filmed all the time. And we do expect them to comply with any instructions given by the chair or the staff members or security when security is present. We expect them not to disrupt the meetings in any way, and we also expect them not to bring any signs and placards. So this is where we're at. If anybody would like to perhaps comment, that would be great. And perhaps share your thoughts on what we can do with this document. So I'll leave it up to you to ask any questions of me and where we can go from here.
Okay, I see Margot is on the list.
Thanks for you, Joanna. So again, so I'm actually going to turn to Curtis for one of these things, because I do recall, over a year ago, we discussed the idea of banning recordings. And I seen from member, we took it to Jillian, and she told me we could, I think she told us as a group, we couldn't do it. So I'm just mindful that we have asked about this, and I'm trying to stretch my memory back that far, and I can't. So I'm just trying to recall. I do remember having a conversation about the idea about the beginning of the meeting, the chair making a statement saying, "And I do not permit you to record me." And even that, we were told, I don't know that we can do it. So that was one of my comments, and the other one's on clapping, but I'll leave it to you first, Curtis, to see if you remember those conversations that we had.
Thank you, Margot. The issue of recording, I'm not recalling the specifics in terms of the advice, but I do know that in Ontario, only one party has to agree to the recording or filming of another, which seems rather strange. But I believe that's true, and I'm going to look to Superintendent Shash.
Yes, Sari, through the vice chair, yeah, that is legally, that is accurate. We joke we're a one-party state, so to speak. So yes, one party needs to be aware, and then it is legal. Yeah, correct.
Correct. So as long, it's, yeah, as long as one person agrees to it, and the person who is recording it, of course, they agree to it.
So I remember having this conversation and finding that we did not have the power to do that, so just being mindful of that. And then the second piece is the clapping. And this is for me, it's really hard, because we as a board like to clap when things go well. So if we are celebrating EQAO results or something, we clap. So how can we clap for that and not allow the public to clap for something that they are... I just think if we are going to say we are not allowing the public to clap, we have to follow, we have to follow the same, we can't pick and choose where we do that and where we don't do that. So I'm just mindful that there are many times that we have, above and beyond Inspire Awards, where we have great EQAO results, and we clap. Or retirements, and we clap. So if we're going to go down that road, we need to be very mindful that we are practicing what we're preaching. So if we're saying you cannot clap when you support delegation, or you cannot clap when you support something going on in the board, then we cannot clap when we are trying to support positive peace in the board. I'm just really mindful, that's not, to me, is somewhat difficult.
Yeah, and so if I can just reflect on that, I'm thinking, this is our meeting, so obviously we get to applaud when we feel it's the right time to do so. I personally don't see harm, that being the example we set to the gallery, meaning if we clap, the gallery claps. But I think what we're talking about is the gallery applauding during delegations or when things are not necessarily to be celebrated. And so I think it's more about that they follow suit but don't do their own, take their own actions.
If I can just follow up, though. So that's, we are celebrating what we are seeing to celebrate. They are celebrating what they're... Like, I'm just really conscious of perspective. So we really need to be mindful of perspective. We have our perspective on things. We see things that we want, we think they're great. Other people might not see everything that we see as great as being great. They see things that are great as well. I'm just really conscious that... I don't want to be a hypocrite. I can't be a hypocrite. So if we are telling people we can't clap, I just, I find that, for me, really difficult, just because I just don't, I really struggle with that. And I know I've talked to Curtis, and Curtis called me out on it one day, but I just, I just really am mindful that we are a community of learners, we are a community of, and we need to practice what we're asking, just my opinion. So.
Thank you, Margot. We'll move on to Jean and then Robbie.
All right, thank you very much. On the topic of noise, I think this discussion goes beyond just clapping. It could be boisterous cheering, yelling out, or any other kind of noise that is in support of a particular perspective or opinion. Or it could be noise generated to support the antics of an unwanted individual who walks in here and parades and starts yelling. And then we've got people clapping and supporting that disruptive behavior. So I have concerns about that, that kind of noise, and I also have concerns with how long it can take. For example, we could have a delegation make a point, and every time they make a point in their speech, clap, 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 make another point, clap, 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 clap. I don't know, is that, is that teeing down their three minutes to speak to us or five minutes to speak to us? I don't know. I just say that it could get to be quite disruptive and out of hand if we carte blanche, say, "Go ahead, clap, cheer, make noise, be supportive, have fun." I think it could just become a little bit, very much out of hand very quickly.
Thank you, Jean. And our final speaker on the topic, Robbie.
I'm intrigued in this debate, and I propose the amendment to say recognizing service, which I think would actually cover retirements quite well, but would not, I'm reminded of, in this chamber, the director gave an excellent speech earlier this school year, and a number of our members responded with applause to that. And that, I think, to me, would be an example of a place where if we were asking the gallery not to applaud for presenting a viewpoint, that we probably would want to consider refraining from applauding in... that we probably would want to consider refraining from applauding in, in, which is, which is challenging because that, that was a stirring speech. And it is one of the things that our Director does extraordinarily well. So I, I, I hear what's being said and I think it's a, it's a question worth wrestling with.
Okay, so hearing these comments, Tanya, would you be able to then take that back to your committee and propose changes, make the changes as suggested and bring back to the Committee of the Whole?
Yeah, so this is a committee of one, it's just me. So yes, I will talk to myself and figure things out. But this is a living document. Yeah, left and right will like to speak to each other. But it is a living document. This is, this is a place to gather your thoughts. And that's why I wanted to, to share it here tonight. So if you haven't had a chance to enter a thought, please do. Anything that needs to be questioned, please question it here. And then I could take it to whoever. Then there's also a section at the bottom of the document that has nothing to do with the public gallery, but it has to do with us as a board. So we don't have to discuss it now. But there's just some recommendations to make the inside circle a little bit more comfortable. So if you can, if you want to add any thoughts, and then if there's agreement, then I'll, I'll share that with, with the Director and get his thoughts on what we can do. They're easy asks, right?
Thank you very much.
I'm going to say yes right away.
Okay, thank you. I should have put in other requests in there if I was getting carte blanche anyway. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Moving on to 3.3 communications too from the Chair, and that is Margot's item.
Thank you. So a couple of weeks ago, we had a little bit of a discussion and I asked for input as to how you see us moving forward with what we're doing with communication that the Chair receives from multiple different sources and how we go about letting people know of this correspondence. So thank you to everyone. I know we had lots of input and I went through and kind of tidied up the, if you look on the link there, there's kind of two different sections. The first was sort of a conglomeration of a whole bunch of ideas that people put in. And the second, Robbie really did a really great job of trying to find a way of how to memorialize it in policy kind of thing. So we do have lots of comments. So I'm just, I, we really need to get some direction on this because I still right now in my inbox have communications from other boards. And I know that by and large, it seems that people seem quite happy to have communication that comes from other boards, from the Minister, from MVPs be put in the consent agenda. And then the only letters that would be included in correspondence from the Chair would be letters written from our board to various parties outside of the board. So really, if I can get some input, I've left the comments that were put on the document because there was pros and cons to both sides. So really, I just want to get some input as to where we want to go finally with this. And again, to pass on to Amy, I'll write this up and send it on to her. So she has some idea as to what she wants to do with the correspondence she receives. Happy to take questions and answers.
Thank you, Margot. And we've got Jean on the list.
Thank you very much. In the interest of transparency and reflecting on the OPSA session that took place at noon hour today, there was mention of being sure to check legal from time to time. And I wonder if we would, when we start to get down to the, the end of this, that maybe we would need to ensure that we are not, I guess, stepping outside of what we should be doing in a legal perspective by not acknowledging communications that do come in. Like in other words, if we are deciding, yes, we'll put this in our agenda package and no, we won't. So just a thought on checking legal.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for Margot on this topic?
If I can just say, really, the one distinction between the two is that there are many letters that come into the Chair that might not necessarily need to be shared with. Like you receive letters from students, you receive letters from all types of things that might be addressed to the board. And in the latter of the two sections, there's the discussion of at the discretion of the Chair. There was some discussion about that in the side bits. So I'm just, that's really what I'm wondering is what people want to do with that piece. Because I don't necessarily think it's practical for the Chair to share absolutely everything they get. So, but there is some concern, people said we need to share everything. So again, it's just that at that discretion piece is the thing that I really want to kind of dig into, please.
Okay, and I see there are a couple more speakers, Kelly and then Tanya, and then we'll wrap up, please.
Thank you. Through you, to Margot. I'm one of those who does not agree with the may share at the Chair's discretion. Because having been Chair, I did share everything. And other than what came to me from my own community. And I believe that it's relevant because we, while we are the Chair representing the board, we're only one trustee and usually are the conduit of all communication to trustees. So anything that comes to the Chair is usually meant for all trustees. So that's why I don't believe it should be may and at the Chair's discretion.
And Tanya.
Yeah, so with the, the sharing, I agree with Kelly that the Chair should be sharing all communication, but it doesn't have to be put on the agenda. So it could be sent via email. So I think the, what we're talking about is formal letters that we receive that could be included part of the, the board package. Yeah, so there, there's a, there's, you know, an email that the Chair gets that should be shared via email with all the trustees. But if it is a letter from Minister Leche, well, then we can include that as part of the board package. Okay. The one question or maybe point of clarification, and I'm looking at Robbie because it was in the section he wrote. Towards the bottom, it said a motion proposing a board action or response to the communication could be added to the following agenda. The one worry I have is if we're including a letter that we received in the board package, we should be able to make a motion on that day because it's germane to the agenda. So if a letter is included in our board package, we shouldn't have to wait to the next meeting to, to do a formal motion. We should be able to do one on the spot because it's, and some letters are time sensitive. So we don't need to wait till the next meeting. So that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Great suggestions. We're moving on to committees. Item 4.1.1, Delegation's Governance Procedure Update, and that's Chair Collard.
Good evening, trustees. I'm trying not to beg my knees on this lovely desk. If you've ever sat in this desk and banged your knees, you know what I'm talking about. So this evening, what we're going to be looking at is the work that's been done to date by the working group. You'll see a lot of yellow. The yellow is things where we've made changes or additions. And I just want to preface this by asking around the table, how many people were able to watch Marion Thompson Howell's presentation at noon today? Okay, so hopefully a lot of us have an understanding of, of where she thought we ought to be going with these things. And hopefully that will help set the table for what we have done. So if we start at the top, we've considered changing the name of the governance procedure to connecting with trustees and delegating the board. And this was, came directly from the presentation that Marion did last month where she talked about engaging the public and making sure that that is part of our policy going forward. And so connecting with trustees and delegating the board seemed to be a good fit. And that was why that change was made. And then we added a section called connecting with trustees. And of course, you know, outlining some of the various ways that trustees can be contacted, telling people how to find our contact information, telling people how to email the entire board of trustees so that they don't have to look for each of our email addresses, telling people how to observe the board and committee of the whole meetings. And that videos of past meetings are also available on their YouTube channel. And telling, telling them how to contact their trustee and when it would be appropriate to do so. And it just so happens that Associate Director Sal Mimi is currently working on the dealing with public concerns admin procedure. And so she has offered to kindly meet with me to go over some synergies between how we could be presenting this information in this GP and how she would be dealing with her AP in the future. And we've planted a seed that perhaps it will be called addressing public concerns instead of dealing with public concerns, just because it sounds more invitational. But there are some ideas there about why we have the procedure in place and which, which concerns should be coming to the trustee and in what order. Then we move into delegating the board. And we wanted to highlight the reason for delegating the board. And so the purpose of a delegation has been added in there so that people understand what delegating the board is supposed to affect. It is supposed to broaden the perspective of trustees on issues over which we have purview. And that's why we limit our delegations to things that are not operational, but rather things that we will be voting on or matters of governance. And so by outlining that early on in, in the section on delegating the board, we set the table so that there is a broader understanding in the public of what delegations are intended for, what their purpose is, and, and why we only hear on certain topics. And moving down into the sections on requests to delegate, we chose to add some different language, and I will be going back up a little bit. But we chose to add some different language on the third paragraph. Instead of delegates may choose to provide, we are encouraging them to provide supplementary materials. Because quite often, five minutes isn't a lot of speaking time. And by providing supplementary information to the board of trustees, it gives us an opportunity to then take that information and, and do some research on our own and figure out exactly whether or not the, the additional information changes how we may be thinking or the questions we may be asking at the board table. If you note though, in the first paragraph, it talks about having delegations during the public session of committee of the whole or special delegation meetings. And we've taken out regular and special board meetings. And the reason why we have taken out regular and special board meetings speaks almost directly to what Marion Howell Thompson was, Thompson Howell? I'm getting it backwards. What she was telling us in today's learning session at OPSA was that by having the time between, so you're hearing it at committee of the whole and you're not having your board, your board meeting until the following week. It gives you time to digest the information, do that bit of research that you want to do on your own and, and helps you in your thinking process. So that when you come to the table to make a decision, you have a more well-rounded perspective of what it is that the community was telling us in their delegations and, and how that is helping you in making your decisions at the table. Then we said that it didn't really make much sense to have additional written material submitted later than may not be distributed except with the express permission of the Chair. Made more sense that it will not be distributed without permission of the Chair. May not, and then saying accept with the express permission kind of didn't, it was redundant. So we made it will not in that case. Moving down to committee of the whole board meetings, we added this section so that it would specifically tell people what the purpose of delegating at committee of the whole would be. And generally speaking, when we have committee of the whole, the staff that are necessary to hold that meeting are present here. And while trustees may not be able to be present for a, a meeting, they would have the opportunity to watch the committee of the whole meeting on the YouTube channel if they missed it. And the same thing would happen at a board meeting. If, if trustee missed a board meeting, they could also view that on the YouTube channel. So there, there was the, the reasons for having delegations at committee of the whole. And then stating that no more than six delegations would be scheduled per meeting. That's the number that we're currently working with. And we've had some discussion about whether or not that number should be smaller. But you will note later in the procedure, we have shortened the speaking timeframe. And while there were still people that wanted it to be fewer delegations, we're hoping that we won't be getting six requests at a meeting. And so we will get into that a little bit further on. When we get to special delegation meetings, those are, are meetings that are for a specific reason. So in the past, we've had special delegation meetings when we've had a really contentious boundary review or a school closure. And we've had 30, 35 people that have wanted to, to delegate the board on those issues. And they've all had sufficiently different perspectives that they were warranted. And so those, those special delegation meetings would be for a specific agenda item, not for an entire agenda full of what we would have at a board meeting. That would be just on the one issue. And delegations heard at those meetings must reflect the reason for which the meeting was scheduled. And then there's a little bit of information about how the board is notified about special delegation meetings. And that is not changed at all. Anything that's not yellow, it hasn't been changed. Then we go on to this new idea. And I know this is going to be a, probably a big topic of discussion this evening. The community feedback meetings. And where this came from was the, the idea that people want to be heard on things even if they're not within our purview. They want us to be able to ask those questions of staff. So if we were to have a special community meeting where they could give feedback on things like APs, for instance, then we would hear those. Even though we have no avenue for making change, we can at a subsequent board meeting say, you know, we heard this question. And, and, and use the time of trustee comments and questions to ask those questions of the Director or through the Director to staff. And so that was the idea behind it. And the requests to present are almost identical to the request to present a delegation. Just wanted to make sure that, that the small nuanced differences between delegation and these special nights is clear. And those special nights, we had thought maybe twice a year. But I think what would really be more likely to happen would be if we're getting a lot of noise, and I don't mean noise as in the din. I mean, a lot of parental concern about a particular operational item. It would be good for us to at least hear it and acknowledge it and ask questions of staff related to the concerns of those people. So then we get into consideration of requests. And here we've added in a line that the Chair and Vice Chair will determine whether or not the request meets the eligibility criteria because that wasn't there before. And so we thought that's kind of important to make sure that the eligibility criteria has been met. has been met. And we've also added in that they are required to identify their specific topic and introduce new information for consideration on that topic. There was also the addition of the working relationship between the chair, vice chair, and the manager that the manager generally takes in the requests. And so we were thinking that the manager would then work with the chair and vice chair to try and suss out which of the requests were similar and try to facilitate communication among the prospective participants so that they could work together. And perhaps in that result, in having a more robust delegation than if they were to do so individually and be almost the exact same as one another. And we go down further, the written rationale for any requests that have been denied or deferred. And individuals or groups who have delegated on a particular topic will only be able to present again following a four-month interval unless the subsequent presentation is for the purpose of presenting new information. That's reasonably aligned with what Marion discussed with us this afternoon, but she had a 12-month interval. I think 12 months is fine if, you know, we would go with 12 months upon her suggestion, but we would also want to make sure that trustees are comfortable with that. Then the publication and privacy notice so that their delegates, people giving community feedback would be knowledgeable to know that they are identified in our agendas and on our website. And here's where we get into the length of each presentation. We allow five minutes for the delegation or feedback and up to five minutes for trustees to respond with questions of clarification. And that was also something that Marion highlighted, that the questions during the delegation portion of the meeting should be only to the delegate and should only be questions of clarification. And that any questions of staff should happen during the discussion of that item in the business portion of the meeting. So we were aligned with her on that. There were a lot of ways in which we were aligned, and it made me feel really pretty good about the work of this working group. And then there was a section about if a presenter was unable to pretend, to attend the meeting, the chair may recognize an alternate speaker. And previously it had said as identified on the request form, and we changed that who was previously identified on the request form, just to add clarity. We've also added an entire section on decorum, which strongly resembles a lot of what Tanya spoke of earlier today. And we've used a tiered approach. We have asked prior to entry that each guest will provide identification and sign in. And Marion's comment on that was that they don't have to provide identification unless they're presenting, but I don't think that that means that we can't ask for it. So I think that's a legal question we may want to pursue. But I know that currently we have been asking for identification for anyone who comes into our gallery. Signs, banners, and placards, and I would like to add to that, flags are not permitted in the viewing area. This is to ensure the safety of everyone in attendance and to avoid distractions away from the appointed speaker. The way I phrased these, I tried to put in the rationale for the rule. I don't want to just state rules. I want to be clear as to why that rule would be there. Guests are required to sit quietly in the chairs. And as we heard earlier from Marion, she said people should not be standing in the gallery because that creates an atmosphere where energy gets high and you're more likely to have disruptive behavior. So I was glad that we put that in there. And only persons recognized by the chair are permitted to speak, and this is to ensure the appointed speaker can be heard by all those present. And here is another point about the applause. Applause is not permitted unless invited by the chair. And so in this case, I think we balance both perspectives that we heard earlier about the applause in that the chair can invite the gallery to applaud for great EQA results or for the retirement of a superintendent or a general manager who we are celebrating. Guests must remain in the viewing area unless invited by the chair to enter the meeting area. And this is to ensure the safety of trustees, staff, and other guests. This last one was always there, but it said delegates, and we've changed that to presenters. Must refrain from using derogatory language and making statements that would personally identify individuals. And then we have the chair's response to breaches of decorum. And it's really important to have that there so that people can't say they didn't know. And so guests will be required to remove signs, banners, placards, or flags from the room. And if they refuse, they will be required to immediately leave the property. Guests will be given one warning for making unnecessary unsanctioned noise. If they continue, they will be required to immediately leave the property. Guests will be required to immediately leave the property if they enter the meeting area without invitation, because that could be deemed as a threatening posture, and we can't allow that. Presenters will be given one warning for using derogatory language or making statements that could personally identify individuals. If they continue, they will be ruled out of order by the chair. Their presentation shall be immediately terminated. They will be required to immediately leave the property, and they will not be allowed to present or delegate the board for a minimum of one year. And that's the strongest of all of the measures. So then we've got the forms where we've made it so that we've added in a few categories. The delegation is in support of, opposed to, or I haven't seen the recommendation, because some of the items haven't got put into the agenda yet. They don't know what the recommendation is going to be, but they know that we're doing a boundary review and they want to delegate the board. For the detailed outline of the purpose of the delegation, we've added that they must put in at least three points. And we've asked for them to give recommendations, at least one. We don't want people to come in and tell us not to do something or why we weren't doing things the way we should without giving us a good idea of how we could be doing it better. And then this has been changed down here so that all materials are to be provided, taking out the if yes. And then the decorum piece at the bottom, by submitting this request to delegate, I hereby certify that I have read and understand the decorum requirements in Section 6 of the Connecting with Trustees and Delegating the Board Governance Procedure. And that is their sign-off, that they have agreed. And the one for the special meetings is the same. So there, I've given it all to you, and I know you're going to have questions, but I wanted to give it all to you so that you could see the flow instead of trying to tackle one piece at a time. Because I think the flow shows a little bit of how the thinking progressed as we went through the document, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Amy. And we have a speaker's list. First, Kelly, please.
Thank you. And thank you to the committee for all your hard work. You can tell a lot of work went into this. I do have a few concerns, just because I couldn't go in. I'm going to go with one of the later sections because I couldn't, it's in front of me as opposed to. But under decorum, it says guests are required to sit quietly in the chairs provided for the duration of the meeting. I think you need to get rid of duration of the meeting because you cannot make people stay in the chairs for that period of time. That's just one comment.
Good point. All taken.
I am very much against the community feedback meetings because I don't know if you were here or even Donna was here, when we used to do the awards nights on community feedback meetings or community meetings. And so we would save them up for twice a year, and trustees were supposed to go, and we would be recognizing all the awards throughout the year in these two sessions. And I would say two or three trustees would show up, and that would be it. And then the meeting sort of became a nonentity, which is why I had brought the idea back, where we have come from for the Inspire Awards. So when I had brought it to the tables, because I had lived through the different iterations and we needed to make sure we were acknowledging everyone. You cannot make trustees go to committee of the whole or community feedback meetings. So those are extra meetings that people may not feel that they can fit in. And I don't feel it's fair to delegates to be able to come to the board and not expect all trustees be there to hear their voice, which is part of why I think it's a great idea when they come to the board meeting, because all trustees are required to be there and they can be heard. My other concern is I do not think we should be opening up this to items outside of our jurisdiction, because that is exactly what it is. They're outside of our jurisdiction. So if a parent comes and delegates because their child's in a class of 40 and they want their child in the class of 10, they're going to be very frustrated because we can't do anything about it. So I feel that it's just going to create frustration, that things can't be changed, that there's a better avenue for people who are concerned about aspects that are under the director's control, and that would be to talk to the director, not through this avenue. I just don't think, I think it's a lose-lose on many ways. And I just feel that people will have an expectation coming to it, and they won't get anything that they want from it.
May I respond? Yes. I'm just, I would like to know, on the community feedback meetings, I did expect there to be pushback, because these are topics that we do not have purview over, so I'm not surprised. I'm wondering if people have considered an alternative way of getting that kind of feedback from people. And I'm not asking for us to discuss that this evening, but if people do have alternatives to community feedback meetings, the working group would be more than happy to hear about them, because we do want to make sure that if the community is upset about something, that we know. And I know that we get a lot of emails about things, but sometimes that's just the biggest voices. Sometimes it's people that have a very strong perspective on one matter. It would be good for us to be able to ask the questions that the community wants the answers to and for us to know what those questions are.
Okay. Thank you. They do have that avenue. I have many people call me, asking me questions, and if I can't respond to them, then I will either ask them to talk to the superintendent or to the director, because they are the people who are responsible for it. So I think they do, and maybe it's just making the public aware that's the avenue.
So then using the addressing public concerns pathway, you think that's enough? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the list is Tanya.
Yep. So I look at this and I see a revised governance procedure. And governance procedures are supposed to supplement the policy. And nowhere in our policy, it's almost like the work was done backwards. You have a policy.
We're working on the policy, too.
So, but you're asking us to perhaps okay some of these changes when they're in contradiction to the policy. So if there's a revised policy that the committee is working on, that would be great, because then we could see what procedures can be put in place to support a policy. So to me, this is kind of coming backwards.
Can I respond?
I'm not finished yet. So I do fully agree with Kelly in that we are bored to look and address governance matters, and we are clearly muddying the waters if we introduce community feedback. And up until now, we've been very good about what's in our purview, what's not. By having community feedback nights to listen to them is out of our purview, and I do not, I would not support these community feedback meetings. I do have some questions. The very first section, which is connecting with trustees, we do have a section already on the website on how to connect with us. And this is a governance procedure, not an information piece for the public. So if we want an information piece to the public on how to contact us, then that should be an information piece. Here's how to contact us. We already have information on the website as to what our roles are, how to contact us, like our names, our phone numbers, our emails are listed, that information is there. So that whole section on connecting with trustees, to me, that's not GP material. GP material is how we as trustees need to conduct our business. I do agree with Marion, we should put a 12-month period. And then the other thing about decorum, again, decorum isn't a governance procedure as to how we want the public to behave, it's how we need to behave. So I would remove the decorum from in here and put it as an information piece. But I am curious as to decorum for delegators, that tiered approach that was mentioned in the survey. So what happens if a delegator uses derogatory language? What's going to happen? What happens if a delegator refers to someone by name? What's going to happen? So I was really hoping that that would be more broadened, that would be more...
Okay, Tanya, you're...
Okay. My time's up. I'll go back on the speaker's list.
Yeah. Thank you. Amy, you wanted to respond?
The moment's gone. It's okay.
A reminder, there was a talk about the policy structure, what does not belong in the governance procedure, contacting the trustees.
Yeah, okay. So the decorum piece, because it speaks specifically to the chair's response to the breaches, is absolutely GP material. And at the top here, where we talk about connecting with trustees, it may not be governance procedure material in the way we normally have it, but this is where people are going to look. This is where people want to see. We're asking them to go and find things on the website. This is also something they can find on the website, and there's no harm in having it. So that would be all I'd say about that, is it's a good piece of information for them to have, especially if they're considering delegating the board. They see that section first and think, oh, maybe I can just contact my trustee. And then they might not need to delegate the board, because the trustee might be able to provide the information that they need. So it is a bit of a how-to, and I think that's fine, because the public needs to know how to reach us, and I don't think there's any harm in having it there.
Okay. We'll move on to the next speaker, and that's Margot.
Thanks, Joanna. That threw you to Amy. So I share Kelly and Tanya's concerns about the special night. So I share Kelly and Tanya's concerns about the special night. I think we spoke about that when we were in our meeting, and I do think, you know, looking at other ways that you can do that. And I know that we spoke about it when we met, about having super council meetings and looking at how to address those issues within a community. Because really, again, as Kelly pointed out, if you're having these meetings that are for the public to come, and maybe a whole bunch of Kelly's people are coming to talk about something happening in Oakville. For me, if it's not really relevant to me, I don't know that always I would be wanting to come. So I think that would be a difficult piece, because you'd want, again, if somebody's coming to speak to the board, they're going to want to speak to the board, and I don't know if that will get that sort of audience there. My other piece is I'm just looking at, when you talk about breaches to decorum, and I know this is something that was really highlighted during the last year in terms of, you know, calling a recess, stopping the meeting. And I wonder with the idea of derogatory language or personally identifying individuals, I think there's somewhat, some of them I don't even know if they deserve a warning, because in your introduction, when you introduce the delegate, you tell them right at the beginning, these will not be tolerated, and if you do this, your delegation will stop and you'll be asked to leave. So giving them a chance, to me, almost is allowing it to happen once. So I'm just wondering if with that one piece, so, yeah, Kevin, oh, Kevin's on it.
I'm on it.
Oh, you're on it, but it says Kevin here. So that piece there, I just wonder, really, I don't know that any chances for derogatory language or personally identifying individuals, I think that is the end of that delegate. I like, I think that is, those are really extreme infractions, so no chance for those. I think other pieces, like if they start going off script or start talking about something they're not supposed to talk about, you call them back, you say, listen, if you keep going off topic, you're going to have to stop, this is your warning. But those pieces, I think, are pretty strong infringements and shouldn't even be given a chance, just my opinion.
Okay. Thanks for that. So we'll take that back to the working group.
Okay, thank you. And next is Robbie.
Thank you. Handful of things to look at. One of the elements in today's presentation was the question of residence requirement, and whether we should allow delegations from outside of our board. And given that our mandate is to bring forward the concerns of students, parents, and board supporters, we might want to look at limiting to that.
Absolutely. I took note of that, and because our working group met last week, it's not in there yet.
Yeah. A couple of points in three that are from the original text, and that I, I think we need to draw out, we've struggled with these in the short time that I've been on the board. The Board of Trustees will only permit delegations that address an item that will be voted on by trustees at a later date. Every policy has a revision date on it, so if we're looking at anything with a revision date in the next three years, technically, we're voting on that at a later date. I'd like a little more specificity on that. And then a governance matter. And that one, I think we've struggled to interpret a governance matter. And it would be helpful to tease that out a little bit. Agreed, I support the 12-month interval. 3.2.1, I didn't know that the extra paragraph actually needed to be there. It's a little odd, under the Committee of the Whole heading. That introduced paragraph there, just, it, no, the yellow paragraph. It was, to me, it didn't add a ton. And then finally, in 6.2, guests will be required to immediately leave the property if they enter the meeting area without invitation. And I get what we're getting at there, and I'm just, it reads almost like you have to be an invited guest to come to our meeting.
But the meeting area is this part of the room. That's the gallery.
That's the gallery. This is the meeting area. So they can't come into the meeting area, they have to stay in the gallery. Perhaps it should say they need to stay in the gallery?
In the gallery.
Okay.
That's what I've got.
Okay. Thank you, Robbie. And we have Kelly. Thank you, through you. Tanya mentioned about the connecting with trustees paragraph at the beginning. I'm inclined to agree with her, that I don't believe that should be part of the actual policy, but I could see a place for it being down in the Appendix A, the delegation request form, and having that information there, so that if you, so this is the information, if you feel that you still need to have a delegation, then this is what you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Kelly, and we have Tanya again.
Yeah. So my concern is, the way this reads is, we wouldn't be having any more public delegations at board meetings. Okay. So what happens in a scenario where an item is to be voted on at a board meeting? How will the public be able to speak to an item?
Committee of the Whole.
Pardon?
Committee of the Whole.
How? The board agenda goes out on Friday, and on Saturday, I'm an eager beaver, you know, parent, and I see, oh, they're going to discuss the budget, and it has to be approved by the trustees. I want to talk about it. But it's being voted on on Wednesday at the board meeting. So how do I, as a parent, delegate the board at a committee of the whole if there is no committee of the whole between Friday and the board meeting?
I'm planning on adding into the board agendas and committee of the whole agendas a list of upcoming decision items. We used to call that deferred items, and we would have the actual report attached, but I'm planning on using that area of the agenda, not for deferred items, but for items that are coming, and I'll have the dates beside, so that people know.
Okay, but we don't always know. We don't always know what's coming on the agenda. And I think by forcing to have delegations only at committee of the whole or special nights, we're actually doing a disservice to the public by not letting them delegate at the board. And I think, too, what I heard from Marion this afternoon, is that we should be allowing delegations at other committees. So the Governance Document Review Committee, where policy is discussed, they should be able to, you know, find it on the calendar, the meeting is on this date, and they should be able to listen, participate, and delegate if they want to. But I think by restricting them from attending board, like from delegating at board meetings, we're doing them a disservice, because we don't always know what's coming on the agenda, and there's not enough time sometimes for the public to go in and put an item on the agenda, especially if there's an item that needs to be voted on quickly, that approvals, there's deadlines that need to be met. So I'd like the committee to perhaps reconsider that.
The committee did try to find a balance between not having delegations at the same meeting in which they were being voted on, because of requests from trustees, to have time to think about those delegations that they had heard, and weigh and consider and do their own research. And that was supported by Marion this afternoon as well. She did talk about having meetings at, or delegations at committee. My only concern with having them in the smaller committees is that you don't have all trustees present, you never will. You have at most five trustees in those meetings. And so I am concerned about having them at smaller committee than committee of the whole. I understand the issue with something maybe coming up more quickly than we expected. We might be able to make exceptions in those cases. But I think there's a reason why the municipalities do delegations at committee. And they do them at committee so that they're not making those decisions at the same night that they are hearing the delegations. They're very deliberate about that, and I believe GDSB does that as well.
So if I can add, if ever a trustee is uncomfortable making a decision on the same night a delegation is made, trustees can opt to defer. They don't have to vote that day. There's always the option to defer. So it's like, we're making, it's more of an exception to the rule. We're trying to, up until now, we haven't had issues with delegations. We've probably had, our biggest concern is the delegator and how they're presenting information, or how they're, what they're saying or not saying. We really haven't had issues where we have six delegations in one night and we're forced to make a decision. So let's not try to change everything radically if the system isn't broken.
Okay, thank you, Tanya. We have reached the time, we have allotted to this. However, we do have two speakers, so let's go over to Jean, Margot, and then we'll wrap up.
Yeah, just really quickly, and in reference to Tanya's last point there, I do recall a time where we were having delegations on the night that we were asked to make a decision. It was about a school...
A school name.
It was about a school name, and we were holding up the whole process of what's involved once a school name is determined, for that group to move forward and all the work that they had. And so I believe that night, we were really needing to make a decision, and we had delegations that night that were very passionate and was very difficult. So that's just in reference to, it can happen. Maybe not all the time, but it can happen that we are needing to make a decision.
Thank you, Jean, and our final speaker, Margot.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm coming back to what Tanya's saying as well. Thank you, through you, Joanna. I'm just, I just know that recently, we've been taking a look at different things that come to board once versus twice, and trying to look at lessening the number of things that have to come twice. So I'm just worried that by doing this, we're going to go back to having things coming twice again, if this is a, because if they're having to delegate ahead of time, you're going to want to have time for them to know the policy, or whatever's coming to board, the report. So it will come once, the delegates, and then it will come again. So I'm just, I'm really worried that we're kind of shooting, the two different pieces are kind of shooting each other in the foot. So just really to look at how those marry together in terms of things coming back to the board more than once, and how delegations fit into that piece, is just something I was thinking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. That's a good point. So we've had some really good questions and comments. Amy, how would you like to proceed with what you've heard?
Well, this was just an update. So this was certainly nothing that was put in stone, set in stone by any stretch of the imagination. As you know, throughout this process, we have continued to survey trustees to make sure that we were going down the right path. And this was another effort to make sure we're going down the right path, because a lot of, there was a lot of, there was a very wide range of opinions on things. There were some things that people really got behind, and there were some things that they really didn't get behind. And then there were a whole bunch of things where, wow, it was right split down the middle. And it was very hard for us to determine whether or not we were going down the right path. And so this was a way for us to test the waters, and I think this has been successful in doing so, because we've heard very strongly about the special nights. And I will happily take those off, because there was no support for that around the table. So absolutely, if there's no support for it around the table, then it comes off. And the other helpful pieces, yeah, we don't want people to sit in their seats all night long. So, thanks for pointing out the things that we hadn't noticed, and we'll get back to work. We will hopefully have this wrapped up before Christmas. It would be a nice Christmas present if we could. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Amy, and thanks, everybody, for this great discussion. So we'll move on to item 4.1.2, which is Board Self-Assessment, with an update from Kelly, please. Will be joining us. Reset, okay. All right, so we are on to item 4.1.2, Board Self-Assessment, with Kelly, over to you. Thank you. Thank you, and this is on behalf of the Board Self-Assessment Committee, which is comprised of Joanna, Donna, and Margot, and myself, and myself. And I'd like to thank everybody for participating in it. I think it was very valuable. I will be sharing the results with everybody, so that you can go through it after. What I have tried to do is, I have shared every question, and they all came through anonymously, so which is great. So you can see for like, the first question here. Oh, the keyboard, okay. Which one? This one? Okay. Okay, so you can see the first question here is, the board is fully committed and understands the mission statement, vision, and values. And so we actually got some diversity in the answers. So I summarized it for everyone down below, or we summarized it for everyone down below. And then we've put some questions there that we think we all need to think about. And so all the questions that everyone answered has been done the same, but there are some areas where there is quite a bit of diversity in answers. I'm just trying to, so they've been highlighted with a red question mark as something that we as a board should probably be looking at, maybe, because of the diversity. It may be we need some education around some areas, we may need some team building, we may need some more information. So some of those can be done through some of the other standing committees. We may need to just do it as a board in general. But I just wanted to give you a brief overview of the whole thing before I shared it with you, so you sort of understood. So like this one, the board uses the feedback and information about community, can't read it that far away. Have to go to this one. Parent Needs to Shape Its Strategies in the Multi-Year Strategic Plan. So we have four trustees who believe we use the information from the community to shape the plan, which demonstrates an area of strength, whereas six believe we only partially have achieved that, and the board's performance is only satisfactory and demonstrates an area for potential growth, or we have just begun to use that information for the community. So it's something that, and then we had one trustee who believed that the question was not applicable. So we tried to create some questions around this and highlight some of the ones that we thought were maybe of concern, because we thought we as a board need to address it. So the intention for this, as I said, I will share it with everyone. With the Striking Committee, there will be a new Board Self-Assessment Committee. That committee will take this survey and can then take those questions that need to be potentially addressed, and discuss it and share with the other committees and other people as relevant. And this survey will be used again next, the end of next term. And at the very end of the survey, there were two questions that were a summary from the last term. We can use those again for something that's happened this year, to see if we've accomplished what we wanted to as well. Are there any questions about the generalizing of it or information? As I said, I will share it with everybody, and you can all go through it in detail. I'm not going to take you through it, so, okay? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Kelly, for taking this on. This survey certainly sheds some light on areas where we can, you know, areas where we can gain some improvement. And I think those key themes can be pulled out, as you've said, by other committees. For example, Professional Development Committee can take a look at the results here, and utilize them to help shape some of the professional development that will be undertaken over the course of the year. So thank you very much. Before we proceed, I failed to acknowledge that Kelly and Neve joined our meeting shortly after it began, so I just wanted to make that known to everybody, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Agenda 4.2.1, and that is Notification Protocol. Margot will be presenting, and Margot, again, if you could speak to the background piece on this, where it stems from.
Okay, so if you recall, I want to say it was in September, this was brought to board and was taken back. Tanya asked us to take it back to really address the motion that was involved, so we have gone back and taken a look at it. This has been shared with you all, so I'm not going to read through it, because you all hopefully have an opportunity to take a look through it. It will be coming back to board, I'm going to say, probably at the next board meeting, for approval. The one thing that is missing in it is in Appendix A. There is a letter to principals in a welcome package that we have, but we have also decided as a team to create a letter that we will share with elected officials to give them some insight as to this policy, because that was part of the motion, so I'm just going to leave it there for you to have a look at. And if there are any questions, but this will be coming to board, hopefully at the next board meeting.
Okay, we have Tanya on the list.
Yep, so for clarification, we're not going to be voting on anything, this is just like a No, no, even at board, there's nothing to vote on, because it was, it was a matter of executing on a few motions. So what we're looking to agree on is if we're okay with Appendix A, and we're okay with Appendix B?
Correct, and then also, so in the table, what we as a group have done is really divided it into internal HDSB as well as external community pieces, and really looking at, you're happy with the way we've gone with this, and feel it reflects the spirit of the motion. I know there was some questions around that, but again, we, as a committee, I know, we looked into the idea that it says, it be resolved that in order to foster collaboration amongst elected officials serving the whole community, Piece 1, that the Board of Trustees consider creating an ad hoc committee to develop a notification protocol that can be applied consistently for events and opportunities of shared interest, Part 2. So we've separated those two pieces as being separate. So one of the pieces is working collaboratively, and the other piece is creating that protocol, notification protocol, or report. So again, we've gone through this and tried to adjust some of the wording. Again, sharing it with the director versus the principals, and looking at how it works, not only within the board, but also as we, the second part of the motion was to share it with other elected officials to ensure, because we can't tell them when to invite trustees, but by following practice that we have, maybe there will be a more consistent approach to recognizing trustees at outside events.
Okay, thank you, are there any other questions or comments for Margot about this notification protocol?
And I do want, this has been a really tricky committee, because we've had a really hard time getting together. There's always, we've had meetings, and then the big cask, because we haven't had quorum. But again, thanks to Kelly, Joanna, Jean, and Tanya as a visitor to help us out, in looking at how we've moved forward with this, thank you, everyone.
Seeing no one else on the list, Margot, I just inserted a comment in there, I've noticed the last column in the table is actually meant to be part of the text below, and you already have part of that included, so just have another look, and yeah, yeah, okay, thank you very much. Okay, so now we are on to Agenda Item 5.0, and that's Trustee Questions and Comments. Are there any questions or comments from the trustees tonight for the Committee of the Whole? We have a list, Tanya. Oh, sorry, you're off the list. Okay. Kelly?
Thank you, it's more about what I just presented, I just wanted to, now what was I going to say? Sorry, the thoughts are going through my brain, it's just I lost that one. Something. I lost it.
Okay, while you think about that, Shinie?
Okay, thank you, so we have lots of committee, and the committee meetings usually discuss for the public, and we have live stream as well. So I got questions, actually. So for, in our HDSB calendar, we can see the standing committee meeting, the agenda and the meeting schedules posted online. So for other committees, for example, ad hoc committees and other committees, where can we find all the schedules?
Okay. Shinie, can you be specific as to what committees you're referring to?
Now, I can see that the PIC and the CAC, and these meetings, and or maybe audit, these are, these committee meetings are already posted on the calendar. But for other committees, because we have, you see, we have other committees as well, but we have lots of, like, ad hoc committee, those committee meetings, and are those meetings public? Or if it is public, where can the public see the agenda?
Donna Daniele, please.
May, I'm just on the hdsb.ca website. I went to Board of Trustees, and then I did the dropdown menu for Board Committee Agenda and Minutes, and you will see things like the Delegation Working Group Agenda, the Governance Doc Review Committee Agenda, the Board Self-Assessment Committee. Those agenda packages are all in there, under Board of Trustees, and the dropdown menu of Board Committee Agenda and Minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, Tanya?
Further to Shinie's question about calendar, I think what Donna alluded to is what has happened already. It doesn't tell us about upcoming meetings, so to Shinie's point, so Shinie, on the HDSB website, if you go to the Parents tab, there is an option for calendar, and in the calendar, it does list whatever gets posted. So for example, if you go there now for November 9, or November 2, you'll see that there was a PIC meeting. November 9, there was an audit meeting. Tonight's Committee of the Whole is showing up. But to Shinie's point is, where, so it's on this calendar that we should be seeing CAC, PIC, audit, governance, the other standing committees, or in whatever scenario the board is, trustees are meeting, because those meetings are open to the public. They need to be posted on this calendar, so that if the public wants to attend, they know how to attend, if it's in person, or if it's via online, virtual, I'm going to say Zoom, Google, whatever, whatever option, so virtual. So it's on that calendar, that's where it's supposed to show up, all of the different committee meetings.
Okay, I'll ask Carolina to speak to that, as this was not our practice in the past year.
Thank you, through the chair. So that is something that I can certainly take back, to look to see what practices going forward will work for the board in terms of reflecting some of these meetings in the calendar. So if you allow me to take that back, and we can look at how it would work best going forward.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, next on our list is Kelly.
I remembered. Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody that the self-assessment is about the Board of Trustees, it's not about the board as a whole, it's about our perspectives, as we thought about our, our role as trustees, or our, or how we were doing our job, that type of thing. So I just wanted you to make sure when you're reading those questions, you remembered that, that was the perspective, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Any other trustee questions or comments as we wrap up this session? Seeing none. We are done with the public session of the Committee of the Whole, and we will be moving into private session immediately. We have the full complement of trustees, and staff are still in the room, as per the public session, and so we are now in private session.